I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Noting of the roll, please.
Noted. There is a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of twelve E. Possibility of paving Sanders Road Letter to the Road Commission.
Fourteen E.
Fourteen E.
I'll second.
You have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Hearing none. We have an approved amended agenda. Item five, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Colvin. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Okay, item number six, public comment on items not on the agenda. Any public, you'd like to come up to the microphone and speak on items not on the agenda coming up?
Good evening, Brian Cluett, your Director, Oxford Public Library. I just wanted to bring you up to date on the generator status. If you've been to the library recently and you checked out behind the building, you'll notice that there's at least some concrete pads there now. And the underground utilities are all in place. They're working on re-engineering the main distribution panel in our mechanical room right now. That takes several weeks of engineering to get that underway. But once that's underway, we anticipate that it'll be in pretty short order, the generator and all the equipment will sit on the pads. Probably at this point sometime in, like, I'm guessing probably mid to late August, we'll have that in play. But I'll certainly keep you up to date. This has taken a lot longer than any of us anticipated. I mean, we're what, now a little over a year into this process? But I have heard that it's not uncommon for this type of project. I also want to let you know that the library will be undergoing some renovation in some of the staff area as well as some of the public area as well. That renovation will likely start on or about the week of July twenty-two and will run roughly through the week of September nine, pending there are no conditions that we run into. And at that point, when we finish that part of the project, we will have an additional small conference room for smaller groups of like six to eight people to be able to meet in without meeting in the big community rooms. We are also expecting our window replacement in the circulation lobby to come in within the next couple of weeks. When we do that, we'll try to give you as much notice. We're not going to shut the building down, but we are going to close the circulation lobby. So we'll have to rewrite or reroute people through other parts of the building during that part just for safety reasons. And in addition to that, we're also gearing up for our one-hundredth anniversary in 2025. The library was established on July twenty-fifth of nineteen twenty-five, so we will have a year of celebration next year along with our actual anniversary falling on July twenty-fifth of 2025. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address us?
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Albit. I'm a candidate for Township Trustee, and I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you to all of you. I'm sure this is sometimes a thankless job, but as I'm out there doing what I'm doing, I just wanted to say thank you as a member of this township. Have a great night.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Any other members of the community, items not on the agenda? Seeing none? Let's move to item seven, Board of Trustees' comments. We'll start with Trustee Payne. Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Colvin, too? Okay, I didn't mean to. We'll go, how about Treasurer Ferrari?
Good for right now.
Trustee Noel?
I'd just like to say that we're, it's exciting to see Dirk being moved out in front of the Myers location for our new sewer line going north. And I apologize in advance or continue to apologize now for any inconvenience it causes folks going in and out of some of those locations out there as progress moves on.
Thank you. Clerk Wright?
Just that elections are in full swing right now. The ballots have been sent out to absent voters that request a ballot or an application. And next month at this time, you'll know the results of those that'll move on to the general election in November.
Thank you. Trustee Charles?
Nothing.
Nothing at this time. Okay, I have two. Number one, we are starting, we're preparing for the 2025 budgeting. Danielle's got a timeline set up for meetings. We are seeking cost of living amounts the county and the state are proposing. If there's any projects, if there's any performance raises to be given this year, we'll need all that. We'll take it in an email to myself or to Danielle. We'll capture it. And when we sit down, we'll have the special meetings to go over the expenditures and then the required meetings to approve the budget. Also, we have One Millage on the ballot for August sixth, correct? Clerk Wright, One Millage?
Just One Millage, that's correct.
The Sheriff's Millage is on the ballot for August sixth, so hopefully everybody understands what that means to our community. Other than that, we'll move on to item eight, presentation, the 2023 audited financial report. Raina Emmons?
Good evening.
Good evening.
A pleasure to be here tonight. Again, my name is Raina Emmons. I'm a partner with PSLZ. My pleasure to once again present to you the Charter Township of Oxford's annual financial statements for your fiscal year ended December thirty-first, 2023. The, again, to start with some highlights, property tax revenues increased four point six one percent, which is not a tax increase, just taxable value increases on the properties. So that is reflected in the property tax revenue this year. State shared revenue decreased slightly. The year before, you had a census adjustment from the state. It's a one-time every ten years, so that's not in this year's numbers. They're also not projecting any significant increases in state shared revenue going forward when you're looking at budgeting. There is some legislation that is moving though that could help with the local units with the state shared revenue. The, really, the story here tonight, interest income significantly increased this year. We went, I mean, we, the township increased over a million dollars over what they produced last year in investment earnings, and that across the board, not just the general fund, but across all the funds of the township. But that's definitely significant. You've done a nice job with positioning your investments and all in safe, while safeguarding the money, but taking advantage of the nice interest rates. So that, you know, we like to see that certainly. The other, the other trend I'd like to point out is how much you accomplished here in capital improvements in the township this year. Again, very significant, over three million dollars worth, and it's a variety of things. It isn't just one thing. You were trying to cover a lot of the township, everything from parks, the bike paths, the, you have a fire truck, parking lot repavings, pocket park, you know, just a variety of things. I'm not even capturing all of it. But that is not done by accident. You did that very well. You planned all that. You budgeted for all that. And, you know, you, you know, you have tremendous administrative officials, but also the trustees were very, I know you're all on committees and you're all very involved in that. So this didn't happen by itself with the steady hand of the supervisor, who's kind of the captain of the ship steering things. You know, you accomplished a lot last year, and I know you have a lot of things still in motion for 2024. So keep going. Nice job. Also, taking advantage of grant money for the township, so that, you know, that played off nicely. Township also paid down seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in bond debt principal this year and another hundred and forty-five thousand in the Oakland McComb interceptor debt. The water and sewer funds have operating losses after taking depreciation into consideration, but you're positive in cash flow in the water and sewer funds, which is significant. But also, your connection fees that you collected this year as opposed to the prior year did decrease about three hundred and some thousand dollars over the prior year. And so that's a reflection of building activity within the township. Lastly, the pension fund. You are seventy-five percent funded in the defined benefit pension fund. The year before, you were at eighty-eight percent. The difference is now you're doing everything right. You're certainly contributing what you're required to contribute and then some. You, once again, the township made an extra three hundred thousand dollar contribution to the pension fund from the general fund to make sure that the pension fund is strong. But last year, the problem is net investment loss. So because you're, this audit is based on twelve thirty-one twenty-two stock market values, there was a, it was a bad day in the stock market. So you had a net investment loss of seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the pension fund in, in the year that we're reporting in the audit. But I did look at, so you already have numbers obviously from twelve thirty-one twenty-three, which will be for next year's audit, but you already had made the gain. You had a net investment gain this year already of seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So I want you to sleep well at night. You've already recovered all that.
It was a wash.
Well.
It will be.
It will be a wash, yes. But you, you have been contributing the extra, so I, I expect your funded rate to come back up again. The, and, you know, seventy-five percent is still very respectful. The state would, you know, loves to see seventy-five percent. But your goal is much higher than that. You're, you know, you'd like, I know you'd like to be closer to ninety percent, so I, we'll be close. I'll be happy to report on that next year. With that, if there, there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Just a question. I know we wouldn't do that. But we've been in a better financial shape. If we'd have played the route that the other communities did when it came to the pensions and just great poor mouth and not did any extra funding. You know, there's some communities that are ten percent, twelve percent funded. The state kind of passed that legislation.
Okay, and the pension fund?
Bumped theirs up. Would that have served us any benefit?
The, the state did a one-time Michigan pension grant, they called it, for communities that are under sixty percent funded. And they, those communities did benefit from that. You were doing everything right by contributing, making extra lump sum contributions. So on the one hand, if you were under sixty percent, yes, you would have been able to take advantage of that Michigan pension grant. As far as being fair, it wasn't really fair because the communities that are doing the extra didn't get the credit for that.
We wrote the state, ask them, shouldn't we get some type of a, you know, bump up for that? They said, thanks, and got patted on the head.
Well, you know, also to that, the state had stipulations along with that grant. No employee could get a raise for the next five years. If you had a union participation, they had to give concessions. There was a whole lot of things that would have hamstrung our community efforts with employees. No township employee could have got a raise because the fire department, which draws the MERS, is, I mean, is our employees. So it would have affected a lot more than us being under sixty than it does with us over sixty. Trustee Payne?
Well, the other thing is, is that we had the money.
Yes. Yes.
So we didn't need to take that money or pay the money.
Thank you. I, that's, that's kind of the thing I look at, Treasurer Ferrari, is we were there fortunately to be fiscally responsible. We don't have to rely on them. Trustee Charles?
First thing, I agree with what you said or understand because I'd read the same thing about the pension, that if we got this money, there's a lot of, we were handicapped in other areas, so it made no sense. And a quick question, what would it take? You said the goal being a ninety percent. What would it take to bring up to ninety percent?
You, I believe with, with this new valuation as a twelve thirty-one twenty-three, I think you're pretty close to it. I did not run the numbers for that, but again, it's, it's also a moving target because it really does, part of that equation is what the stock market does on the last day of the year. So the valuation plays into that funding percentage. But you are, I, I know that, I know that the administrative officials do work, you know, talk to MERS and they're trying to make the contributions based on, you know, what, what extra number do we need to get to that ninety percent? So, you know, everyone has their eye on the ball, but we could get that, we can figure out what that number is, but, you know.
Correct me if I'm wrong. The MERS as of twelve of twenty-three was seven hundred thousand dollars below or underfunded. Today's money's already been made back.
Correct.
So we are about, we.
You were eighty-eight percent the year before. You've made it back up. You're going to be pretty close to ninety, you know, at this next, in the next audit. And you've also contributed an extra hundred and seventy-five, I believe, this year?
Seven-five thousand last year.
In, in, correct, which, which may, it may not be, I don't think that's reflected because it was after, after the cutoff for MERS.
When did we transfer that money? Yeah, it was after the twelve thirty-one.
So that will also reflect in there. So you'll be really, really close to that. Actually, we can, we, they just, they just sent out the actuarial evaluations, MERS did, for last year. We probably just received it. I haven't seen it yet.
It's not worth going over. I just thought.
But we could probably calculate that now and you could, you know, I could report, just send you a memo.
We would like that because we want to stay solvent in our retirement fund, so we're not caught five years down the road looking for that state fund to take over ours downfall.
Well, in keeping with, you've been doing everything very methodically. Again, you're budgeting, you're, you know, you're accomplishing a lot of improvements within the township. I, I feel like you just need to keep going. And again, you're taking advantage of all the grant money that you can, and that certainly helps as well, so.
Thank you. Are there any more questions for Raina?
I move to receive and file the Charter Township of Oxford audited financial report for the fiscal year ended December thirty-first, 2023 as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Don? Trustee Noel? He's not here. Just a flashback.
Let me call him.
I thought I was talking.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne? Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on, item number nine. We would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss some attorney-client privileged information.
I'll make a motion to meet an open session, entertain a motion, take a roll call vote, two-thirds majority needed, regarding calling a closed session for the following purpose: Discussion of written legal opinion regarding the following. Potential purchase of property pursuant to MCL fifteen point two-six A two-six-eight one subsection D, MCL fifteen point two-six eight one subsection H.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Supervisor Curtis. Any questions?
Excuse me. Need to include who is included.
Sorry. I meant to include the Township Board, Attorney Alice. And Recording Sectors McCullough and Smith.
Second?
It's already been seconded.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne? Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go into, I did, yes.
Okay.
We have to go into closed session, so we'll call you back when we finish our attorney conversations. Now we're back in open session. We'll go to item number ten. We have Building Official London here with us tonight, should there be any questions. But item ten A, Soil Erosion Ordinance one-two-nine point zero-zero-one, first reading. Clerk Wright?
Yes, this is what this does, I don't know, maybe it's still in Building Official London's thunder here, but it's just taking the fees out of the ordinance to actually put it into resolution form. But this will need to go to the attorney to get it drafted for the second reading.
Evolve in the closed session.
Are there any questions for Building Official London tonight? Seeing none? Yes, Clerk Wright?
I move to settle second reading and possible adoption of the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance one-twenty-nine point zero-zero-one for the August fourteenth, 2024 Oxford Township Board of Trustees' regular meeting.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Clerk Wright, a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Are any questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item eleven, Fire Department. Chief, what do you got for us tonight?
Nothing official, except for the fact that hopefully this rain moves out by Sunday. We're doing our charity car wash to send the Goldie family out to Colorado for the Fallen Firefighters Memorial to get his name added on the wall. So hopefully if it's not raining, come out, get your car washed, make a donation, anybody, that'd be great. I think we're doing it noon to four, noon to four, so.
And you don't have to get a car wash if you don't want somebody touching your paint.
There you go.
You can still make a donation.
Yeah, and we have a Venmo on the website as well, so anything that anybody can do, that'd be great. And that's all I got tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Item twelve, Sharp Engineering Report. Board members in your packets was a pretty concise activity report for the township. We have Engineer Sharp here tonight to address any concerns or questions. Are there any questions or concerns for Engineer Sharp? Hearing none? Item thirteen, unfinished business. We'll start with item A, the Oakland County Sheriff's Office Substation Build-Out Approval Bid. Attached for your consideration is the committee's recommendation to accept BrenCal contractors. Bid proposal to execute the approved construction plans provided by Auger Klein Aller Architects. This plan to expand the Oakland County Sheriff's Office Township Substation and build out the empty space under the Township Boardroom. BrenCal contracting is the lowest-priced qualified bidder and is recommended by the Architect Advisor, AKA Architects. I just wanted to point out that not included in their bid specs are some repairs that need to be handled by a contingency fund such as drywall, painting, and floor repairs of the vestibule in the, in the main lobby, and shelving, and updates and paint. So I would look to see if there were any questions or concerns at this time.
I move to accept and approve BrenCal contracting, amount of four hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred forty dollars as a qualified bidder and recommend a contractor, AKA architects. This sub, this work encompasses the expansion of the OCSO substation and the renovation of the Charter Township of Oxford vacant lower level space. All work will be done according to the AKA architect specifications for this expansion. The capital improvement team is also seeking an additional fifty thousand dollars for contingencies for unforeseen expenses not identified in the expansion. These expenditures totaling five hundred forty-four thousand, four forty will be charged to account number two oh seven, three oh two, nine seventy-six point zero-zero-two, Substation Expansion.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Hearing, seeing none, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Board. Item twelve B, Single Waste Hauler Ballot Language. Trustee Noel, and I have Attorney Alice to assist.
Thank you. The committee, the Single Waste Hauler Committee has worked very hard in, with the help of our attorney, in developing or writing out a ballot proposal to be put on the November ballot. And we're looking for approval for that tonight, the wording of that. I move to approve the resolution to approve the placement of ballot language on November fifth, 2024 ballot, requesting Oxford Township registered voters have advice as to whether the Board of Trustees should adopt an ordinance authorizing the township to contract with a single hauler for the townshipwide single trash hauler services.
Second. I have a motion by Trustee Noel. I have a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Hearing none?
I have a comment.
Oh, where? Yes, sir.
Just said if, if this does pass the, the election, it'll go straight to a first reading in November. It won't be a request if you want the first reading because the voters will already indicate they want this to go.
So the first reading would be scheduled for the board meeting, which is?
November second, Wednesday. Just so you're aware.
All right. No questions? Roll call.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Okay, item thirteen C, Website Recommendation. Trustee Charles?
Okay, I'll read this verbatim in a few comments. The Oxford Township Website Committee met several times and discussed various concepts in terms of future Oxford Township website. After much discussion deliberation, we decided to interview three firms that we felt would be able to handle a complete redesign and refocus of our township website. I'll stop right there and say, we actually interviewed more companies than that. I attended a few Zoom meetings and conversation with different companies, and then we narrowed it down to these final three. So it's an extensive process, but these are the top three. Shoemaker, Revise, and Lucid. So as it says here, after much committee discussion, we decided to recommend STG Shoemaker Technology Group. They have a lot of local government website design experience, Addison Township, Brandon, Polly and Trailway, and MTA, as you notice on here. So I thought that was a critical part of the decision-making. We feel that their pricing, design, structure, and customer service would be more in line with our needs. And customer service was a big issue when we dug in the background of a lot of other companies. We are recommending the Platinum Package, forty-four fifty, and the optional add-ons with aerial drone photography and videography in the summer to be done in the spring or summer just for visual impact, which is four hundred bucks. They're both on page fifteen as a proposal. We're also recommending the, for the hosting and maintenance yearly plan, option B, fully managed, two, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per year, which is on page sixteen. And that part might change as things go forward, as we get more familiar with the program. So the other thing I'll mention is I see Mr. Shoemaker here, by the way. I'll let him, if that's okay with you, to come up to the microphone and maybe give us a more complete description than what I was able to do, even with my microphone on.
Okay, are you looking for a description of our company or what we intend to do, or?
About all your brilliance.
Yep. So like Trustee Charles said, I'm Kyle Shoemaker. I am the founder and owner of Shoemaker Technology Group. We are a municipal website development firm headquartered in Lansing, Michigan. We do serve over three hundred municipalities, including several of your neighbors that he mentioned up there and the Michigan Townships Association. We have throughout this process looked through your current website fairly extensively and do think that there is quite a bit of room for improvement, making the site more organized, making the site look a little bit better, which will hopefully benefit you as board members as well as the staff of the township by hopefully allowing people to, residents to find what they're looking for without having to bother you quite as often, at least if they are so inclined to serve themselves. And we hope it will benefit the residents because they can do that at two o'clock in the morning if that's when they want to look up a form or permit or resolution or something, even when you are not working. So definitely got some big plans to improve the website. We hope that you'll allow us the opportunity to do so. And I welcome any questions that anybody has.
Anybody have any questions for the presenter?
Well, just a couple of quick comments. One is we would also change it to dot gov.
Yep.
Do you want to mention that process a little bit?
Yep, so it is the recommendation of our Federal Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, also known as CISA, that all entities of government, whether federal, state, or local, like you guys, convert to what's called the dot gov domain. So instead of ending in something dot com, dot org, or dot net, it would. So instead of ending in something dot com, dot org, or dot net, it would end in dot gov. Probably something along with their naming requirements, probably something along the lines of Oxford Township MI dot gov, or Oxford TWP MI dot gov. Lot of benefits of the dot gov. One of the biggest ones is not just anybody can go out and register that. I cannot myself register a dot gov domain, because I'm a private business. I can coach you and hold your hand through the process. There is a fairly substantial vetting process that makes sure a dot gov is only issued to a government entity, which gives the public a lot more confidence when they come to the site that they're on the right site. That may seem a little bit tinfoil hat paranoid, I understand that, but of our over three hundred clients, we have two of them that have had fake websites set up by residents or other people that wanted to confuse the world.
Okay, currently, we have two bills for our website, I believe. One is for a dot org that we had to buy through GoDaddy or something. I, I, we'll find this all out.
Okay.
But we're paying for the use of something, and we're paying for, there's two things we're paying for, I think.
You, you might have two domain names.
Yeah. It, it's two domain names that we're paying for. Would like to consolidate that, is that going to happen with the dot gov?
Yep, we would recommend that the dot gov become the primary. It is unfortunately the recommendation of Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency that you do maintain the registration on those old ones. The concern that they don't want to happen is if you let that registration lapse, then somebody else could buy it and they could set up a scam site on what used to be a legitimate government website. So you, you don't have, there's two choices. We can either direct them to the dot gov site, or we can just quit using them, but own them so nobody else can.
But we'd still pay for them?
Yes.
They cost about fifty bucks, I think.
It was, I think it's ninety-five dollars.
Ninety-five dollars. If I have a half a dozen, I own myself.
I asked Kelly for a couple.
Yeah.
Just like three years ago, we didn't want to spend the money and do all this stuff, and we had, get together with students from the high school, and we got what we got. It didn't cost us anything. Now, to do it professionally, and with your suggestion of dot gov strengthening our security, I agree. I have no problem with that.
And to your point, by the way, one of the things that the committee took into account was the feedback from people that worked here at the township, that sent messages. Joe handled a lot of that, so we looked at that when we were kicking ideas around. And Kyle responded, did a lot of our requests for flexibility. Once we looked at the feedback from people, too. So he was very flexible in adapting to what we wanted, so thank you. So with that in mind?
Right, you had to use this one here, if they would like a more revised one.
Okay.
And before you read your motion, the biggest user of our township, township website right now is probably the building department. And we are challenging the building department to use it more. BSNA and BSNA inspections are up to now almost, what, seven hundred? Almost, almost eight hundred out of twenty-four hundred. So we are rapidly increasing that, and that information for the building department is critical. So.
So the Oxford Township Website Committee recommends to the Board of Trustees that we formally approve the new Oxford Township website, website design with STG Shoemaker Technology Group. We'll purchase the Platinum Package, four thousand four hundred fifty dollars, and optional add-ons of aerial drone photography and videography in the spring, summer, four hundred dollars, both on page fifteen of the proposal. We will also purchase for the Hosting and Maintenance Yearly Plan, option B, fully managed, one thousand two hundred fifty dollars per year, which is on page sixteen. These funds are to be expensed to General Fund Account Number one zero one dash two six seven dash nine six two point zero one one.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Trustee Charles, and a second by Treasurer Ferrari. I have one question. In the motion, you're approving the design. You're approving, recommending them to design the website, correct? So how did that motion, we are approving their design, or approving them to design? How did that motion read?
I'll read it back. As I think we could say, to design a supplement, which case we'd have to vote that down and then redo it.
Well, my point is, we would love to give this business to STG. I want to make it clear that the design of the website, this board gets a chance to approve it once it's done.
Yep.
Recommending them to design our website is what the motion should be, not recommending their design. You board members have approval to approve the design. Follow?
Yep, that was our intention, yes.
Okay. So we would vote this down?
I think that's what it read. I thought that was the way it hit.
I didn't hear that, but.
The website, the Oxford Township Website Committee recommends to the Board of Trustees that we formally approve the new Oxford Township website design with STG.
Well, you're approving the design.
Yeah, I think the key word is new in this whole thing, because you don't have anything in front of you to approve. You haven't seen what the new design looks like to approve it.
And bear with me. What, what we're saying here is we're approving the new design. We don't have a new design. The committee is recommending this company to do the work for us, and then we would get a chance to say that the design is good.
So with a future meeting, we would vote on whether we accept it or not?
Committee would make a recommendation that this is the design, the new design, that we are going to have. End result is, we're, we're trying to award them the business to design a new website for us. What I don't want to do is approve a new design that we don't have. So a motion and a second. We would probably vote this down and just take the word new out and put in, recommend them to design. Clerk Wright?
Yeah, that's exactly right. You authorize STG Shoemaker Technology Group to design a website with the assistance of the Website Committee. We brought back to the Board of Trustees, we can be, and approve your expenses in the motion.
Right, let's vote, let's call the roll on the first motion, and you can read the second motion.
Okay.
Trustee Colvin?
No.
Trustee Payne?
Yeah.
Trustee Noel?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Clerk Wright, no. Trustee Charles?
No.
And Supervisor Curtis?
No. What is your new?
Okay, let me try this again, okay? We got all tuned up here. All right.
You had.
Especially a new microphone, I can hum it, I can sing it, how's that, huh? The Oxford Township. Website Committee recommends to the Board of Trustees, we formally approve the Oxford Township website design with STG Shoemaker Technology Group. We will purchase the Platinum Package, four thousand four hundred fifty dollars, and optional add-ons of aerial drone photography and videography in the spring, summer, four hundred dollars, both on page fifteen of the proposal. We'll also purchase for the Hosting and Maintenance Yearly Plan, option B, fully managed, one thousand two hundred fifty dollars per year, which is on page sixteen. These funds are to be expensed to General Fund Account Number one zero one dash two six seven dash nine six two point zero one one.
Second? I have a motion by Trustee Charles, a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Any questions? Pardon me?
Is it right? I don't think you.
I looked the word new out.
No.
I think it was wrong.
What he said was, he's going to approve the design. We don't have a design to approve.
Don't second self-assured.
Getting to semantic Olympics here.
Yes, well, you know what?
One word can change.
One word can change a lot of things. Shell and Meg.
Now we have to turn it down again, let's take a quick vote.
Okay, roll, call and roll.
All right. Clerk Wright, no. Trustee Charles?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Trustee Noel?
No.
Trustee Payne?
No.
Trustee Colvin?
No.
Supervisor Curtis?
No.
I get it right this time. Wait a minute, Joe, I'm reading what you wrote down, brother.
Make your motion.
Curtis, make your motion.
Make your motion? Sure.
I'm moving with the Oxford Township Board of Trustees, formally approves Shoemaker Technology Group to design a website for the Oxford Township, for Oxford Township, with the assistance of the Oxford Township Website Committee, to be brought back at a future Township Board meeting for consideration of approval by the Township Board of Trustees. The purchase price of the Platinum Package of forty-four hundred fifty dollars and optional add-ons of aerial drone photography and videography in the spring, summer, four hundred dollars, both on page fifteen of the proposal. We will also purchase the Hosting and Maintenance Yearly Plan, option B, fully managed, twelve hundred fifty dollars per year, which is on page sixteen. And these funds are to be expensed to General Fund Account Number one oh one dash two six seven dash nine six two point zero one one.
I'll second that.
You beat Ferrari.
I had to beat Joe on that.
Okay, I have a motion by Clerk Wright, a second by Trustee Charles. I believe we got it right this time. Any questions? No, I don't want to do it again. Did it right. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call?
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. You know, you guys could have went and did this under Treasurer Ferrari's authority, but thank you for coming to the board, and thank you for your hard work. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle will be with you coming up. Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, item fourteen A, New Business. Cedar, Long, Tan Lake Special Assessment District. Clerk Wright?
The Assessment District for the Cedar, Long, and Tan Lake Special Assessment District is expiring at the end of this year, so they have proceeded to circulate petitions around these lakes for a renewal or a new SAD for another ten years. And they have submitted their petitions, and petition signatures have been verified in the clerk's office, and here's a map of properties. I'll just shrink it down to show you. The properties are high, are outlined in red here of the district itself proposed, and what is highlighted in green are those that have signed the petition. So based on that, it appears that there is the fifty percent minimum land area available to continue or to proceed with the SAD. So with that, I will proceed to make a motion here to move to authorize Sharp Engineering to determine the boundary area and the cost estimate for the purpose of creating a special assessment district to eradicate weeds in Cedar Lake, Long Lake, and Tan Lake.
Second for discussion? I have a motion by Clerk Wright, and a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Trustee Noel?
My concern is not the activity that they want to do, the actual work, but it's in the process. That have all residents in this red district been notified that of the intent of this SAD?
Go ahead, Clerk Wright.
Okay, yeah, as far as I know, the answer is yes, because I'm, I'm basing it on the circulator of the petitions. Whether they have or not, I, I don't have that answer. I can reach, reach out on, on that to confirm that.
Trustee Charles had his hand up first, Treasurer Ferrari.
A couple of points or questions. One is on the lakes there, there's some ambiguity about the name of the lakes. Depending which map you look at, we're missing Spring Lake. I think, Trustee Noel, do you live on Spring Lake, is that correct? And I do as well, but I don't see, see Spring Lake on here. I've looked at different maps. Some maps include it as Spring Lake, some don't, some just say Tan Lake. I don't know if that's become an issue, or should we include the names Beamer Canal and Tanview Canal? We brought that up a couple of years ago, by the way, but just, I'm not saying it's a big issue, because I appreciate this, but I don't want someone to complain that the names are wrong, or potentially wrong.
Treasurer Ferrari had a question.
John, trust, kind of what you had had, years ago when they did repaving on my old street, on Gibson, they just got the requisite numbers of signatures, and that was it. Everybody else came along for the ride. I had a neighbor say, they never approached me. Said, well, they had the percentage they needed. They didn't need to.
Yes. I don't have a problem with the work that they want to do. I think we need to clear it up as far as the names of the lake, and we do have in our package a document that says basic steps to create special assessment districts. And I think part of that guidelines is that all people within that district, in this case, the red district, should be notified of the work intended, whether they have been asked to sign the petition or not, but they should be notified of that. And that's just something, you know, we've had some smaller streets come in for paving, and in a small community, a small group of seven or eight, nine homes, it's real easy to do that. When you have such a large population within this district, I think it's only fair to the district and to the process that everyone should be notified.
Clerk Wright?
Yeah, what, what can be done here, if you, if you would want to vote this motion down, I can go back to the petition circulator and ask these questions of the petition circulator, and if you want, well, I, I don't know the process, our attorneys here as well, but as far as if you would have to actually redo your petition because you didn't name Spring Lake on your, on your petition, even though those around this lake signed that petition without the name of Spring Lake on that map that's presented here. And as you can see, right here, along Beamer Court, that was a hundred percent right there. You have a few stragglers here that didn't sign it, you have a big peninsula here, and I don't know where Spring Lake starts, where it was called Spring Lake, or even if it even exists, and I don't know who determines that, whether it's the, the, the Eagle, DNR, or whatever, but that.
The geographic. The Squal Lake, Spring Clear Lake thing.
Yeah, yeah, so, so it's, it's fine with me, I have no problem, because we're just doing the petitioner the favor.
Well, here, here's my take on it, and Brittany, you can chime in. If you got fifty-one percent of the people, that's a guaranteed SAD with no lawsuit. You don't need fifty-one percent. You only need twenty, twenty-four percent, which can be contested at twenty-four and not at fifty-one. Secondly, when people walk around with the petition and go to your door, knock on your door, and no one's home, and they go to the next house, not getting a signed affidavit that you were there and turned it down, we don't know. If somebody says, I didn't get a chance to read it, maybe you weren't there twice when they walked by, I don't know. But the fifty-one percent guarantees you no contest in, in a court of law, but twenty-four percent is the number I think that you can contest.
I'll, I'll double check those numbers. I know it's fifty-one percent. I find the petition to be sound. You're also going to have your township engineer prepare what the parameters of that project will be, so at that time, we could ensure that the lake names are accurate. There's also going to be opportunities for public hearing where people living in that proposed SAD district can come to the Township Board, and they may voice their concerns to this board as to that SAD.
And if I may chime in real quick, the name of the lakes, this being the Cedar, Long, Tan Lakes SAD, you could call this the North Pole SAD if you wanted to. You know, it doesn't have to really, I mean, generally, the names do reflect the road or whatever you're working on, but the name of the SAD doesn't really have to be exact to all of these certain lakes. We could have called it the, you know, the TCL, you know, or the TLC, we'll call it that, you know, for Tan, Long, and Cedar. We could call it anything we want, so.
I'm recording this, engineer.
I know, I know, I know.
Are there any other questions? Trustee Noel?
One, I have no problem with the work they want to do, but if we're going to have basic steps to create a special assessment district, I would think on these, particularly in these larger special assessment districts, we need to have at least an attempt to notify everybody that is in that SAD area.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Won't that be done during the public hearing process? Well, I think, too, I think the Trustee Noel's point is that the initial attempt is that not a hundred percent of the people answered the petition to either say yes or no, or to sign up. So that, that is his point to say. So that is his point, to say, you know what, let's have everybody have a say in it. And also, when you carry out the process, you can protest up to 20% to say no, but once you hit that majority, it basically doesn't matter whether or not you sign a petition, your majority of your neighbors said you're in, whether you want to be or not, and your recourse is to go to the Michigan Tax Tribunal after the SAD is approved to protest your concern that you were not notified, or you feel that your assessment isn't-
Trustee Noel, I would just like to add that before the special, the hearing is held on the SAD, that every single property that is to be assessed is given notice by statute. And we're not holding the public hearing tonight, I believe that we're accepting the petitions and we're setting the public hearing, so the property owners will be notified, and they will be given an opportunity to be heard, should that be their prerogative.
Again, I don't have a problem with the work that they want to do. I'm just saying that it's a large district, a lot of homes are in there. Do they need to be notified? If you say they're going to be notified before, I-
They will be.
-that step somewhere in my research, and I apologize for that, but as long as every home knows that they're going to continue with this activity, it's met the criteria of the state of Michigan, and you will be charged accordingly.
Well, they may not know today, because we're just setting the public hearing, but they will by the time we hold the public hearing, they will have been given notice by certified mail.
Thank you. Okay, Clerk Wright?
Yeah, there is two, actually, two notices that go out, because there's two public hearings. It'd be a public hearing to, the first one is Attorney Als indicated to notify the property owners of the SAD, and there's a second public hearing to notify them to protest their assessment.
Of the SAD, and that's part of that $3,000, excuse me, Mr. Supervisor, that's part of that $3,000 that they deposit when they apply for it?
Yes, yes, all the administrative fees, which include Engineer Sharp, Attorney Als, if she needs to be involved, and then the administrative costs of the publication, the letter cost, the paper cost, postage on it, the administrative cost on my end, creating the resolutions, so that's why this board increased the cost, because they're usually over the previous $1,500.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion by Clerk Wright and a second by Trustee Noel. Any more questions? Joe, do you have a question?
I think I was the second.
Oh, were you the second?
Oh, John was the second.
John was the second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. 14B, Clinton River Watershed Council Agreement, Building Official London. Do you want to explain what that is? We'll get you up to that mic.
This request is to renew a contract with Clinton River Watershed Stormwater Council, who helps provide education for the community to meet the minimum standards required by the National Pluton, of the National Pluton Discharge Elimination System of Stormwater Regulations. I believe it's Public Act 451, Part 31 rules. And they want, they are offering a one-year contract, because they want to assess the future costs and talk with other communities and stormwater representatives to update their education for the public they provide at Oakland County. And then in one year, they'll be back with a five-year contract proposal for the future to assist us in meeting the state regulations.
I move to approve the contract extension agreement between the Clinton River Watershed Council and the Charter Township of Oxford for services for stormwater education, REMS for stormwater permit for the period beginning October 1st, 2024, and spring to September 30th, 2025, amount of $2,170. authorized Supervisor Jack Curtis to sign the agreement on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford. This $2,170 shall be expensed to account number 101-447-821.004, Engineering Stormwater Management.
I'll second that.
I have, was that you, Margie?
Yes.
I thought so. Trustee Payne seconded, Treasurer Ferrari motioned. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call?
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Okay, item 14C, Parking Lot Improvements. Board members, the Capital Improvement Committee is recommending seeking bids to maintain our township parking lot before the winter. Cracks and fading are occurring to prevent water intrusion and frost damage. Crack filling, seal coating, and restriping should be considered. The Capital Improvement Committee is requesting that all bids be submitted with a total bid price itemized to include separate pricing for crack filling, seal coating, and striping. Yes.
Didn't we just, didn't this just get finished?
Yes, it did, Trustee Payne, you are correct, thank you for the question.
Did we get cracks?
Yes, we do.
How come?
Engineer Sharp, could you address that for us, please?
The parking lot, the way that it was recently refinished, we didn't mill down, or we just milled off the surface layer, we did not build a brand-new parking lot with, you know, new base, new asphalt, you know, all four inches of asphalt, so it was a mill and resurface. So you are going to get some reflective cracking coming through from what's down below. Doing the crack sealing and so forth is just part of, I guess, routine maintenance for parking lots, so even if you do new roadways and things, you'll see that, it occurs.
Thank you.
I move to authorize the Capital Improvement Committee to seek bids for maintenance of the township parking lot, upper level and lower level. Bids shall include itemized pricing for one crack filling, two seal coating, and three striping. Once the bids have been returned, the Capital Improvement Committee will make a recommendation to the Township Board for consideration of approval to complete the work. Bits specifications will be available on bid.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Yes, Clerk Wright?
Do we have the bits specs?
We do not have bits specs right now.
Is that, if they're going to be posted on bid, I'll need those?
Yes. We will have them shortly. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. 14D. 14D, Oakland McComb Intercepter Drainage District, Series 2024 Bond. Trustee Noel? The Water and Sewer Committee is recommending that we prepay this bond for $138,894. This bond is our portion of $11 million, $11 million project that Oakland County is taking on, and prepaying this bond will save us the interest rate, and it will save us the paying it for 20 years. So if the board is in favor of prepaying this bond, then I can offer this bond in motion. I move to approve the resolution approving a prepayment of the Oakland McCombe Intercept Drainage District Series 2024 Bond in the estimated amount of $138,894 to be expended to the Sewer Fund Account, 590-527-991.000. Principal payment, and authorized Supervisor Jack L. Curtis to deliver a certified copy of the resolution to the Oakland County Water Resource Commission.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Trustee Noel. I have a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes, Trustee-
What's the interest rate on the bond that we're paying then, this part of it, what's it cost us?
Go ahead, Trustee Noel, it's 4%.
You send your packet, it's 4%?
I missed it, okay, 4%. Right.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call?
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Board members, we're going to go on to 14E, an added item. I sent an email out earlier today and then gave you each packet. Board members, the annual call for federal aid committee funded road projects was held July 1st, 2024. The Roads Committee, Clerk Wright, Treasurer Ferrari, myself, and Jim Sharp submitted a list of roads the committee considered for paving. Of the roads the committee submitted, Sanders Road between Drainer Road and Seymour Lake Road is the only road which is eligible for federal aid funding. The township was notified July 2nd by email correspondence that the Road Commission of Oakland County is moving forward this, with this, as an approved project in 2029. Copy of the emails attached in your packet. The committee is recommending that a required commitment letter be prepared to the Road Commission of Oakland County, committing the township portion of the funding for the paving of Sanders Road and from Drainer Road to Seymour Lake Road in 2029. The cost of our portion has not been truly identified, and funding details will be worked out over the next five years. The township has an option to use tri-party funding and grant monies, would, they would be used, you know, if they become available. The option to cancel our request should funding not be available is always at our discretion. What happened was, I got a letter from the Road Commission, federal aid monies are being distributed for paving projects. For example, Dunlap Road was eligible for federal funding. We got that funding in 2018, and it's now 2026 going to be paved. Right, Jim? This is 2024, we have a list of approved roads out to 2029 paving, so we're jumping on it and asking for a commitment letter that we're going to find the funds for our portion of paving this road to continue any option we have to collect federal monies to pave these, some of these highly-traveled roads. And the Roads Committee felt that this was a good deal, I have to have a commitment letter to the Road Commission ASAP, so with that-
I move to approve that commitment letter, the township portion of the funding, paving of Sanders Road from Drainer Road to Seymour Lake Road be composed, and authorized Supervisor Jack Curtis to sign the township's behalf and submit the letter to the Road Commission, to the Road Commission of Oakland County.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Other questions?
Am I right in saying it's a 50% match that we have to come up with?
It is a 50, no, it's not 50, it's a, go ahead, Engineer Sharp, please.
There are certain portions that are the 50% matches, which is for the preliminary engineering and for the, I believe, the construction-
CE and ROW.
Correct, correct, for those portions.
And 10% of construction.
But for the construction costs, it's only 10%. Yep, the rest, and of that, I believe 5% is covered by the Road Commission, 5% by the township, 90% would be through the feds or something, so.
This is a great opportunity to get a road paved, not on the taxpayer's dime. There is a commitment, like you said, it's 5% of the, half the 10% plus the road right away easement acquisition and design of the road, we pay 50% of, that's right. Yeah. Trustee Charles, you had a question? Okay, roll call?
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
You know, this is five years out, that's our first chance to pave a road with some money, so that's where. Item 15, items removed from the consent agenda, we did not have any. Item 16, another chance, public comment on any item they'd like to make a comment on, please. Seeing no one in the public that has a comment, we'll move on to item 17, Board of Trustees' comments. I'll start with Trustee Charles.
Just a thank you to Kyle for making the trek here to Oxford from the Lansing area. I know you've got a long drive home, but we appreciate your presence.
Thank you for having me.
Clerk Wright?
Yeah, I'm thankful for the improvements for the township meeting room here, I think it's a vast improvement. I don't know what the audience feedback is, if you could hear us or not, if you can see the screens, if they're too small or too big, but any feedback would be appreciated. Thank you.
I have no further comment. Treasurer Ferrari?
A couple of things. First, I want to thank this board for taking the lead on a lot of these projects. We're starting to get things involved where the community can say, wow, these are my tax dollars that work, not just saying, oh, the township's earning 500% interest in the bank, keep it up. I like the idea that we're getting it out in the community, so we can, they can show, we can show them, this is what's happening, this is where your money's going. And also, I'd like to, on behalf of the Water and Sewer Committee, if we could, I'd like to do a financial forecast for them on Water and Sewer, so anybody that approves Water and Sewer bills in the office, please give me a copy of them. I'd like to do some type of a chart for them to get us a little bit out of the issues we have coming upon us. Thank you.
Trustee Noel? Being actively engaged in the master plan rewrite, it's very exciting to see, I know it's 2029, Mr. Supervisor, but it's very exciting to see some road development take place, that's been on the top list of the residents, to have Dunlap Road finished off before 2019, and the possibility of having Sanders Road paved, that's exciting, very exciting. Trustee Payne?
Nothing.
Trustee Colvin?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, one redo. The Water Sewer Bills must be approved by the Water Sewer Committee member or assigned by them, just to avoid a problem for the Water and Sewer Committee trying to play catch-up on a lost bill, right?
That's why I want to get some type of a forecast in, so each month, I can tell my committee, okay, guys, these are the six bills we know are coming in.
Yep.
This is what we know we got, but we kind of think, okay, do we have enough money coming in to cover that? We can start analyzing any potential rate adjustments.
The deputy clerk, the clerk's administrator, my executive assistant, will not be approving any of those bills, so that you have control over them. What was the other one I had? Yeah, we did $350,000 in graveling of these roads this year, and it's starting, well, with the rain today, it's probably going to start tomorrow or Friday. We're next in line, we'll have probably five miles of gravel on areas that haven't been touched in over 30 years, so thank you all. I look for item number 18.
I'll make a motion adjourned.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
We're out.